I'm gonna call Swisher. Council meeting to order for, well, nine, two thousand twenty-four. Can we?
Klein?
Here.
Heineck?
Here.
Pujol?
Here.
Roder?
Here.
Stagg?
Here.
First, right, and just through the agenda.
Motion to approve.
That a motion to approve agenda, I got a second. Quotes in favor? Aye. We already did a couple of order, we'll call for it again. Public comment. So if anybody in the public would like to comment on anything that is not currently on the agenda, we will save commentary on that until such items come up. You can now speak. Please. Nothing? Okay. Let's move on to approval of the consent agenda items.
I got a question. On the claim. That Dorsey Whitney for eighteen thousand three sixty-three fifty for professional service, what's that pertaining to?
Uh, that would have been for the sanitary sewer, um, SRF loan and the bonds that they help prepare all the proceedings for.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions on consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to reports. Sheriff?
The time wore out, might as well, we sent you guys.
Engineer?
Yeah, just, uh, this last month, we worked on, obviously, annexation stuff. We, I guess, we were in first meeting last month, I was gonna talk about the building over here, but we already had chatted about that. Uh, we've been primarily working on the televising project of sewer, sewers. Just FYI, or, I guess, we could talk about that a little bit, that's on the agenda, so I won't go too deep into that. Uh, there was a, a plat that we've been reviewing that will go to PNC this month and then come back to you guys for your second meeting this month as well. So those are most of the things we're doing.
How long are we, Tim, on getting lining out for proposals?
Yeah, that, uh, the schedule, yeah, the schedule, again, that's part of the contract we could top off, but the goal would be to have the project out for bid, the first part, first week of January, take out, or it'd probably be January thirteenth meeting.
Where are you all posting that on, then? That regular city site or that?
Yeah, Iowa League site.
Yeah, Iowa League site, yeah. Do you usually get three or four, do you usually get a few from that?
It depends, yeah. Um, that's probably the best way for us to get stuff out as far as that, your website, the Iowa League website are the best. The bigger projects, uh, they, you might go to a plan room or something like that. That's an independent thing, but, uh, for the most part, who will be getting your sites of us.
Are we still making sure we're getting three bids on everything?
Oh, no, Treese had seven, so that was really the last one that went out.
Yeah, when you go out for quotes, um, or bids, bids is a little different, uh, they just kind of, you have to take away and get it at a time. Quotes, you can kind of target and invite more people directly to be involved, so this sewer project, again, when we talk there, that's gonna be big enough, it's gonna have to fit, form a bit. Something I forgot, I don't know, Darryl, you had some questions, the tree project also is starting, also a week late, but they're going.
Could I talk about that now?
Sure.
Apparently, the, the final, uh, plant or plan deviated from the original one, the trees were different, uh, different, uh, differentages. Uh, the, the original plan we had showed, um, to the east, the two end ones there. They've changed that and are leaving that, this, uh, next to the last one, and it's just about all dead. And my question is, I talked to the-
This, the one right there?
Yeah, well, yeah.
The one, this one?
Well, well, actually, there's two of them right there, the one behind it is the one that has the most leaves on, they're showing for that, but the one on this side to the left of it, they're taking the one to the right that you're looking at, and the cutter says he's not doing the next one. But the problem is that one's got limbs that are dead, they've got holes in the limbs, and they're hanging over the street. And he bid according to what you put out, which is, you know, no problem. My question to him is, uh, if he were to come back, what would it take to get the extra one done while he's here? And he said he'd do it for a thousand dollars. If he has to come back, it's gonna cost twenty-five hundred dollars, moving all his equipment and stuff. I guess my question is, is there any way we can change that to get the extra thousand, to get that, the whole street done?
To include another?
One more tree?
Yeah, one tree, the, the original plan was, it was marked, take out, and it was changed.
Yeah, what happened was, Darryl, just so everybody knows, we went up there ourselves because the DNR has an inventory of, where they're trying to keep an inventory of all the ash trees and the right-of-way across the state. They had come into town, evaluated town, but they had missed Swisherview Drive up there, right where Darryl's talking. So we went out and we took a look at them, you know, we marked what we thought probably should come out. The DNR did show up again later on, they went up and did their own evaluation, and what typically happens is on that list that we've been working from, they're given like rankings such as routine maintenance, critical, and immediate. And we've been focusing primarily on the critical and the immediate because the routine maintenance are technically still alive, they may require a limb or something to be taken on. But, uh, based on the money that you guys have had budgeted every year, and this was, it's been going on since Tanya, it's been focusing on the dead trees in the right way. And, you know, you haven't crossed that threshold of cutting down live ones yet, um, but, uh, that, that's how the trees have been selected today.
See, it's over half dead already, and, you know, I hate, you know, if there's any way we can spend that extra thousand, save fifteen hundred, because he's gonna have to come back next year to cut it down, because he's got, trees are, uh, dead up there, they're dropping, there's a hole, there's holes in one of them limbs. I don't know if there's any way we can, it just seems foolish to have him come back next year for twenty-five hundred, we can do it for a thousand while he's here. But how do, how do we change that?
You add it to more trees that we're gonna do next year, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
And you get a bigger contract, so you have it in, I'm sure, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm sure there's probably gonna be more trees next year that are on the list.
Yeah, you're gonna be doing-
When we already have that five thousand budgeted, we just add that tree on the list to another contract when they have it, then they're already gonna be in town, you know?
You're right, Darryl, they made a special trip to come back.
Yeah.
You're right, it'd be twenty-five versus a thousand, but what Adam's saying is if it waits until next year and is part of the other trees, then it's closer to that thousand.
Okay, this one, I just wanna know, so.
Anything else?
I, I got a question. Uh, we had a little snowfall here, and it wasn't, it wasn't real great, but I noticed our sidewalks and leaving up the town hall and the library weren't swept, is, is there any depth we have to do before it's swept, or it, it all gets tracked in, it wasn't much, but it was, it never got swept.
And it was enough to have the plows out?
And I just wondered what, why those aren't, didn't get swept.
The sidewalks out of here?
Yeah. Up to the town hall and the library and the sidewalk in front.
I don't know, I mean, we, once we got salt and stuff, and we were down working on our equipment for a little bit, we got here early that morning and had a breakdown, and we were down there for a while, and then digging up here till later, and then we salted stuff and cleaned the sidewalks and stuff off up here, but it was later than normal because we were down there working on the truck.
Anything else? Okay, mayor, council, reports. I don't have anything new. Anybody else?
Um, Chad with Ion couldn't make it tonight, um, but if you had any questions for him, you can certainly pass on, I don't know if he was able to zoom in, I sent him the- No. No, okay. He had his report in the packet, but he just couldn't make it tonight to the meeting.
Okay, let's go to item number seven on the agenda. Additional Wednesday night law enforcement. We're reviewing additional law enforcement presence on Wednesday nights since April twenty twenty-four to determine whether or not to. What's your input?
Uh, the reserves that work up there, they said they still see the issues before, I know they've had a lot of traffic stops, we've had issue, Paul has citations to the people, I know you can't control the outside, which is where we fall in, so they've, um, you know, we've had eleven, Paul has written throughout the year, three Odeva arrests, which, those weren't all toward Dance Hall, but just in town, not talking about. We had three that were non-Odeva arrests in those, so they've been drinking, but not enough, they're under limit. Oat potatoes, we give like twelve, two citations, two warnings on that, um, and then possession of tobacco under legal age, we're still, about ten of those too throughout the year, so. Uh, the reserve said that I should do it, but again, I would ask you guys if, uh, from the public, what have you guys heard, is it, that's probably what you guys have been more influenced on, but.
I haven't heard anything. Oh, yeah, I mean, I haven't heard anything good or bad, I haven't heard anything about it, so, peace around here.
You guys stay open all through winter?
Yeah.
So I think, for me, I think we're at the point, the kids know cops are in town, we'll still have random, if we wouldn't do the reserves, there'd still be possibly random patrols.
Yes.
Is it time for us to try and remove the reserves for a month or two to see how it goes?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, he, he comes back every two weeks or a month, and
Yeah.
we, we know whether or not it's, if they're-
Working or not.
Yeah, whether it's, there's been an uptick or not, you know? I mean, if, if we don't try it at some time, you never, you might as well just put it in the budget.
I would generally agree with that, especially during this time of year, a lot of the problems happen outside. It's nicer and vagrancy and hanging out after hours and doing stupid stuff.
When it's nice.
Not when it's ten degrees outside and everything else, so if we're gonna do it, I think now would be the time to implement it and try it.
Would you, would you guys be open Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve?
No.
So I think, I think we try the no reserves until the February, um,
Second meeting in a month.
February tenth? Anything? Could we put that on to relive? But that would give us, because, I mean, December, there isn't gonna be a whole lot of data, there's gonna be one, you know, two others.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the month of January, obviously, if we need to call, we can, but I think let's reevaluate in February, February tenth, maybe?
Tenth of twenty-four.
Tenth, it'll be here on the tenth. Okay, so what we're advocating is taking no action on this going forward? Yeah, there'd be no reserves signed.
For December and January?
Everybody think that's good?
I'm good, I'm good.
We did have a motion, right? Uh, I don't, I haven't done that, I mean-
You were calling out.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, we didn't have a resolution. Um, okay, one to eight? Thank you. Thanks. Consideration of resolution approving the final payment to Johnson County Secondary Roads Department for the city's portion of construction cost for the Division Street improvement.
Motion to approve resolution seventy-six twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve in the second. Discussion. This has to be done, correct?
Yeah.
This is coming forward on this east section out here. No, no, no. This has nothing to do with annexation, this has to be paid.
That's correct.
This is a Division Street project.
This is a prior Division Street project.
Yes.
One that we're still set up here. Okay, one year ago. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Let's have a roll.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Okay, move on to nine. Resolution seventy-seven twenty twenty-four, reimbursement to Johnson County for annexed Deegan Sheely property. That's what I was thinking about here. Motion to approve resolution seventy-seven twenty twenty-four. I got a motion to approve?
Second.
I got a second. Discussion. Darryl?
What is our cost on this?
It's on a revolution there, one twenty-one.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
One hundred twenty-one thousand fifty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Hasn't this already been approved? It was unofficially approved last meeting, but since it wasn't a resolution form, it had to be rewritten into this month's agenda. Oh. Any other discussion? Okay, I got a motion to approve in a second, let's have a roll.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
May.
Pujol?
Aye.
Okay. Ten? Okay, resolution seventy-eight twenty twenty-four, consideration of approving a contract for engineering services with H.R. Green on the sanitary sewer maintenance project. Motion to approve resolution seventy-eight twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, I will show you, approve in a second. Discussion.
And this is not to exceed just for that contract, correct, or thirty thousand?
Yep.
You're looking at, um, just looking at the videos we've seen, like, the entire first region has root issues in it, so you're gonna be lining, you're in there every row, every pipe on that one. Big chunk of the second region, same, oh, I mean, we're looking at potentially from the ballpark to eight thousand feet of pipe. It's a lot worse than what-
Eight thousand lining?
Yeah. Potentially, correct.
What are we looking at for manholes?
Manholes, uh, were mostly, they were in decent shape, there's some that need to be adjusted, and just, I was doing quite a few of those, and those turned out great, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
We do have one spot repair that we need to go get, it's in the alley between, or, to the, to the east of Summit there, that we have to pick on, because but, uh, pipe broke, a drop structure, so.
Is that where we have the pipe break issue from before?
No.
Not in that area?
No. But, uh, that area where I think you chewed out the root ball before is back, so.
That Lariac and Vilsum, where you were emergency called, I figured it wouldn't take long.
What's the, what's the probable timeframe on that lining project?
Well, the idea would be is we're gonna rush, get the plans done, provided you guys approve this, we're gonna rush, get the plans done, this one, get them out for bid for two weeks, uh, we're gonna take bids and hopefully we'll work there in, in January. Then they would have three months to get the lining done, and then we would come back, make final payment and everything, so you guys could be done by, you know, May.
So that would cover that.
Now, is that gonna have to be budgeted in for next year, that, or is that, or do we already have that?
No.
We have a-
It's part of that, um, Division Street money that has to be spent by May.
Got you.
What's our final, or what's our current balance on that?
Three hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars, but then, now, just so we, so we pay one hundred twenty-one thousand fifty-six, we pay two hundred twenty-five thousand two eighty-three, that leaves us with forty-nine thousand eight hundred. We, we're paying AccuJet for the televising out of that, we're, we're down to twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty. But remember, you approved submitting the invoice to Johnson County for the amount of engineering fees that they need to reimburse us, so hopefully we get that. And that would leave us another, a balance of two hundred twenty-eight five in that fund.
But we don't know the timing of when they're gonna, we don't-
Well, they said in the email, mid-December.
That's what they said.
So there, there would be nothing, there would be nothing launched. Right, yeah, so.
Okay.
As we design, uh, you know, we may have to drop from that eight thousand, but we prioritize the lines based on one through five, where one, we're pretty critical, you know? And we're only able to do with this money like the ones and twos and parts of three. So we may end up having to cut the threes out, and, you know, hopefully, they should make it for ten years or whatever until we get back there.
Are they gonna be all, is it like all spot repairs, or is there like certain areas that are really bad?
Yeah, we're gonna line entire pipes from manhole to manhole. Uh, we just have, like I mentioned, the one spot repair, we're gonna have to dig down, get to it before we line it. Um, but most of the issues, actually surprisingly, the pipe structurally, there's not a lot of breaks and things like that, there's just gaps in, in joints and stuff, and that's where the roots and things are getting in. There's also different encrustations, that's what they call it, for overtime, pipe will start to get like stuff on, yeah, in the joints, and starts to hang down, and it reduces the capacity of the pipes. And so those are the types of things we also wanna go in and try to line. I think if we have to start dropping some, those would be the first ones we've dropped to get to the ones with the roots coming.
How many sections do I have left to tell those?
Six.
Tell us.
It's four.
The four oldest parts of the hill.
Yes.
It was supposed to be a ten-year program, but you guys jumped ahead this first year. Just because we had some more, actually, down?
I hear it. Yep. Any other discussion? Okay, I got a motion to approve in a second on resolution seventy-eight twenty twenty-four. Okay, have a roll.
Stagg?
Yes.
Klein?
Yeah.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Okay, number eleven, resolution seventy-nine twenty twenty-four, consideration of appointing Dean Stirtz and Ron Regal to the zoning board of adjustments with the term expiring December ninth for thirty-one twenty twenty-nine.
Motion to approve, resolution seventy-nine twenty twenty-four. Second.
Motion to approve in second. How many people does put on the board?
Oh, they're, it's, it was, it's, yeah, these two are just renewing again.
Is Dean still on two boards then?
No.
He's not on the, up the-
He's just on board of adjustments.
Not just on board of adjustments, no?
All right. All those in favor?
No, this is a roll call, it's a resolution. Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye. Okay, number twelve. Consideration of resolution eighty twenty twenty-four, transferring two thousand nine hundred seventy-six twenty-five from the TIP fund, two thousand nine hundred seventy-two fifty for lost, and forty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-nine oh seven from the sewer fund to debt. Service funds for bond and loan interest payments for the sewer. Motion to approve resolution eighty twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I got a motion to approve in a second. Conversation.
So we, this, this is basically just transferring money from one fund to another?
Yeah, all debt, interest and principal has to be paid out of debt service, so whatever funds actually, actually what I call service, those debts, the transfer has to be made from that fund, for instance, to lost or sewer, into the debt service fund. It's state code, that you have to pay the principal and interest payments out of a debt service fund.
With the sewer fund, we're, uh, now we're down at four twenty-two, is, do we see any reason to think we're gonna go much? You mean, we're gonna go over that at any point with any other certain things?
Over what? Four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars?
The balance after transferring the sewer fund, it says we got four twenty-two now for-
These were already budgeted in, budgeted into, into the budget.
Okay. Okay, uh, I got a motion to approve in second. Let's have a roll.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Okay, item thirteen, ordinance ten twenty twenty-four, consideration of the first reading of ordinance amending city code chapter one twenty-two, fedlers, solicitors, and trans, trans, and merchants.
So this came up from the, um, list of fees that the council reviewed a couple of meetings ago, and I said either, um, I bring back an ordinance if the code book needs to be amended, and so this actually, in the code, it lists out the fees. And this one, and then, uh, uh, obviously, the next ordinance, eleven twenty twenty-four, um, under Dance Hall, um, it, it, again, there was, there was no fee for Dance Hall, as the council, um, said, twenty-five dollars, but what, all of the other places were a fee, like for a building permit, or a variance, or any type of service, um, the code just says, as set by resolution of the council. And so this is amending the code to mirror what the other-
Sidearm.
Right.
Now, there's new fees, are they gonna be listed in our codebook or not, where are you gonna put those?
Yeah, they're gonna update.
That's what the resolution will show, which, which you're, you'll see coming up. Yep.
But, uh, where's all, where's all the fees in here, and I guess I've-
It's on the, it's on resolution eighty-one twenty twenty-four.
Okay, alright. So basically, just making the language within the codebook the same, basically saying, refer to this as your fees. Motion to put ordinance ten twenty twenty-four on first reading? Got a motion? Motion in second to put ordinance ten twenty twenty-four, chapter one twenty-two, fedlers, solicitors, and trans, and merchants on this first reading. I need a roll first. Okay, let's do that.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stagg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Okay, item fourteen, wave separate reading of ordinance ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Motion to waive-
Motion to waive second, third reading.
Second.
Got a motion to waive second, third readings, ordinance ten, twenty, twenty twenty-four. Roll.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Enick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen, ordinance ten, twenty twenty-four, considers.
Yeah, you do.
Motion to approve. Consider, yeah, consideration of second and third readings of ordinance ten, twenty.
Motion to approve ordinance ten, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in second, ordinance ten, twenty twenty-four. Let's have a roll.
Stag. Klein.
Aye.
Enick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen, ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-four. Consideration, first reading of ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-four, many city code chapter one twenty-four, Dance Hall's. Motion to put on first reading. Second. I got a motion in a second to put it on its first reading. Conversation.
Do we have very many peddlers ever come up here and get licensed?
Um, it's mostly like the food trucks that will come. I haven't had a peddler, but again.
That's like the issue.
If, if they do come knocking on doors, you, everybody has the right to ask them for their peddler or solicitor permit. And if they don't, call City Hall and we'll get, we'll get that remedy.
Cool.
Yeah, what does, you have to ask, right, they say no, say go get it, or?
Correct, that too. Yeah.
Tell them you should not have peddled in.
Right.
So this includes like anybody that comes up to your door asking for lawn service or anything like that?
Solar panel, any of those guys.
Yeah.
Turn away the kids from our lawn.
Yeah.
What's that, turn away their kids from our lawn?
Doesn't include those. Unless, like, they're already, you're already a customer of theirs and they're trying to up your service.
Your lawn's kid comes to trouble.
I don't know that there's that many of those people that are in there. So we're on sixteen.
Sixteen. We got a motion to approve, first reading and seconded, can we have a roll?
Klein.
Aye.
Enick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye. Item seventeen, waive separate reading requirements, ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to waive second and third reading.
Second.
Got a motion to waive second, third readings, yeah, second. Let's have a roll.
Enick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Item eighteen, ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-four. Consideration of second, third readings of ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Got a motion to approve eleven, twenty twenty-four in a second, let's have a roll.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Enick.
Aye.
Item nineteen. Consideration of Resolution eighty-one, twenty twenty-four, setting permit, zoning and other fees for city.
So here's where all of those fees are listed on the resolution.
And this is what we all agreed on last time.
Yeah, that was based on that list that we all, that y'all approved.
You didn't change anything on the.
I did not, no. I did, like, sometimes I put if it was per day, you know, the use of those ballroom and lights or, oh, no?
Yeah, so.
Do you think that should have been?
No, 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 um, that's what I was gonna ask, like, did you go back and have conversations with Parks and Rec regarding that?
Oh, okay. They already were aware of those.
And they liked the twenty-five per day.
I think that they had, no, I think that they had brought forth to increase that fee that you folks had got as a council, just to leave it. If I'm remembering right.
They wanted to increase it more, in which one they did?
Yeah, yeah, I wanna say they were making, putting it to fifty.
Yeah, it was fifty.
I think so.
Okay, I think that happens once a year.
Yeah, I wanna say it was two times in this last year that someone had requested use of the lights.
Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution eighty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Got a motion to approve Resolution eighty-one, twenty twenty-four in a second. Let's have a roll.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Enick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
That should do that. Let's go to item Klein. Emergency backup snowplow. Review estimates for emergency backup snowplow. All we have listed in here is the plan estimate.
I've got some words that were supposed to be in, and I haven't gotten back yet, and I just need to follow up on, I haven't followed up on a couple of them yet. I got lost in some of the stuff I was working on, but I should have, if you wanna put it back on the next meeting, I should have.
They say we table it till next meeting?
At least two or three, at least two or three more for you, so.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is a motion to table it until the next meeting.
My, my only concern is if in the next two weeks we do get real, do we use Hometown for, what? The reality of it. I think we're getting snow already on Saturday, so it's.
Significant?
Two inches, I think, but. My, my only concern is in the next two weeks before we can revisit this, if we do get hit, do we go through Hometown or what do we do?
There are four days of snow in the next ten days.
That's right, I just, I wanna have something in place.
Well, this isn't, this is, isn't this just if we need it, though?
Yes.
Right, like, I mean, just.
One of the really, really bad storms, or something happened to one of us, something like that, or if we.
Or one of the trucks.
Full breakdown on one of the trucks or something.
Right. Well, Justin, I'd say we put it that if Justin has the whoever's lowest or whatever he has on his spreadsheet, until he can bring it back to council approval for this snow season contract, if Hometown's the only one he has and we have a snow emergency, we authorize him to use that. If Rob Brown, he gets one from him and say Rob's ten bucks cheaper, you call Rob Brown. Until it can be brought back to council and set through the term of the snow season.
At what point do you determine emergency? I guess, if it's real bad, all these backup positions would be filled too. What's the timeframe for them to respond?
Any of them that I've talked to, I mean, it's, you're, you're getting added to their list, so I mean, it's, they're gonna come when they can. There's not any.
See, that's what's gonna be tough to call, because by the time they even get here, Justin might be able to get to.
Yeah.
Most of it are that part of it. I mean, I, I agree with that, I mean, if, for some reason we do have a, the truck breaks down or we get a foot of snow and, but I know you won't be able to call them off once you call them.
No, which is fine, you know, and I'm sure they're gonna have a one-hour minimum charge or something like that, but we're talking here in the next two weeks until we can meet again or something and have something hammered out more for.
How's that gonna work, Justin, when, like, say you did have to call somebody and, or you're gonna have to meet with them to tell them what streets you need to do and what they need to do? I mean, 'cause they're not gonna know what you've already plowed and what you haven't yet.
Yeah, I mean, we show them city limits and talk to them about any of the, probably the more difficult spots, you know, what we would do on certain streets.
I would say the best thing to do is once we decide who is, is print a city map and have Justin get with them and highlight city boundaries and just.
Do you have any, do you have any ones closer than Home said that's your, that's sending in bids right now?
Yeah, the closest would be Brown, I just gotta follow up with him. And he's, they knew Shoeville, they knew all of Shoeville's plowing, so, but he's definitely the closest.
Both trucks ready to go?
Yeah, they are now. Then we got, we were waiting on parts from Future Line for a bunch of them, but they came in and we got them all put together now, so.
Are they big, big straight truck or the pickup, which one you had probably, the pickup, you gotta wait for the pickup too, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
The Sanders, you know, we own that flatbed truck, is it, are you guys, you got two Sanders?
We got two, yeah, so we'll have them on board. So.
I agree with Dylan, let Justin make the call if he needs to, until the next meeting.
Hopefully it's not an issue.
Right, hopefully it's not.
Yeah, if, even if it's just two inches, it's not gonna be, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Okay, so we'll get this on the agenda during the next meeting. And hopefully we get more bids than one. Okay, item twenty.
Well, you had a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So is, there gonna be an amendment to offer, also authorize use of home, Hometown until twelve twenty-three?
Well, since we're tabling technically.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't actually have to be a motion, right?
Yeah.
Well, you had a motion to table. And we will add the authorization on it.
That's what we mentioned. The table, table has to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you, are you gonna do, ask for a roll, or are you gonna ask for just a call of a vote?
Call of vote, all right, all right.
So when you call, when you call for vote, you ask all those in favor, same with by the same and I?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All those opposed? Right, exactly, you wanna make sure that there aren't none. Okay.
Okay, item twenty-one, budget workshop meetings. Review January, February, March and April, twenty twenty-five calendars and set dates and times for council budget work.
Yeah, so I just kinda went through and noted some of the specific days that we have to have some items completed. And mainly, March fifth, we have to have the property tax levy, the proposed property tax levy submitted to the county auditors by four P M. On the fifth, so there's obviously then some things that we have to know in advance. So I, January, February for budget workshops, I didn't know what days work for the, for the council to hold those. I did a little, I just put into the Tuesday nights, and I don't know if Tuesday night works for everyone, some proposals of what we're gonna, what we could review at that time. But again, it just depends, so our county auditor is supposed to have our property tax assessment or valuations out by January first. Sometimes that's a give or a take, a few days, so I didn't know if the seventh might be too early, depending. So if that were the case, then we might need to bump everything down a week, which would still give us enough time to get everything completed.
Wednesdays actually work better for me, but I mean, I'll make anything work, but if, if.
Sure. So I just know.
I don't know, Cody's probably busier than most of the winter time, but.
That on Wednesday nights, our park and rec board meets, obviously not until eight o'clock, but if we can, if we could schedule those in before that, that would work for me.
I think that's good.
I will not be able to attend everyone, I'll tell you that now, I'll try and be, I'll let you know, I'll email you when I won't be able to attend.
Okay. Okay.
So I think.
Regardless if it was Wednesday or Tuesday or Thursday or.
It's my, my schedule.
Okay.
Till middle of February rotates, so.
Okay, okay.
What time works best for you? Like, is six-thirty best, or is it better to go even early?
We tried to go a little bit earlier.
I think you were going at six last year.
I think it was.
But I was.
What works best for you, like?
Earlier the better.
That's why I would just.
I mean, on Tuesdays or Wednesdays, I'm gonna have two extra hours of overtime just staying here.
Yeah, 'cause you get here, or your day's over at what time?
Four.
Four?
Mm-hmm, City Hall closes at four.
I guess that's what time you guys can.
Because like, if I can't attend, I'm not gonna be able to attend, but if I can't attend, I can be here as soon as five, that's why.
I can be here by five.
That's why I'm saying, what's best for you, like, that would get you out of here earlier and.
I can start, if, if we do Wednesdays, I can do five, I know that, I mean.
Okay.
If something comes up, I can't guarantee for sure, but I mean, I can make it, Daryl's got a pretty busy schedule, he might not.
I know it, that's why I understand.
Pretty full.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the earlier the better, I mean, obviously.
So shoot for Wednesdays and Wednesdays.
Five o'clock on Wednesdays, okay.
Yeah, five.
Okay. Okay, yep, that's all that I needed, just to get those dates set.
So we wanna go like on the eighth?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try the eighth, I'll let you know, if the valuations don't come out until the sixth, I might not, yeah, I might not be ready until the fourth, good to.
We can always, yeah, just. You can always push it.
Right. We might do the fifteenth then, yeah.
Correct, yeah, but I'll, I'll shoot an email. Either way, it'll either, you'll see an agenda coming toward you, or we can, or we're not meeting until the fifteenth. Sound good? Thank you.
Okay. Item twenty-two. Uh, determine the need to hold a council meeting on December twenty-third due to the Christmas holiday, possible holiday get-together.
So I think you heard from Tim that there's gonna be a plat review. And then now with the sewer maintenance program, we want to set the public hearing on the meeting of the twenty-third. So it might only be, you know, I'm just saying, I think there is a need to hold a meeting.
We would try to keep the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, even, even that plat review should, shouldn't take a whole lot of time, I don't think, it'll already be before planning and zoning. And then to set a public hearing to, you know, publish and post those sewer maintenance contract. That would probably be the two things on the agenda, so.
Well, there may be another thing on the agenda.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
I won't be able to make the twenty-third, but that's, but that's no, I mean, you guys can still have a meeting or whatever you want.
Twenty-third's a big question mark for me, I might be out of town at night.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'd want one for a week or so.
Would we have, I just wanna make sure with the other three numbers that we would have a forum, or otherwise there's a sense.
I'll be here.
Making a meeting.
But I should be here.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just need a guarantee of three, so, thank you.
Um, as far as the holiday get-together, we wanted to come a little earlier or something. Could have some treats or something, if you each one, bring a treat or something. Just thought it should, usually we do that each year.
Please, please don't ever see you do it.
All right, let's go. Item twenty-three. Appoint mayor, consider any written request and make an appointment to fill a mayor's position effective twelve o'clock on Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. We've had one name submitted. And unfortunately, that gentleman was unable to make this meeting because he had a family emergency tonight. I don't, I would suggest that we postpone the appointment till the next meeting and repost it.
Why would we need to repost it?
Because Iowa code requires a posting, if you're going to make an appointment, it's required to be published not less than four and not more than twenty days before the date the council considers. The appointment in accordance with section three sixty-two point three of the Code of Iowa. Must identify the vacancy, state the intention to fill the council by appointment and indicate the date, time and place of the meeting at which the appointment will be made. And then the public has a right to file for a special action, so it's a requirement.
Do you have to meet with them personally to appoint them?
No.
No, there's a requirement.
We do, we have one, we have one application.
What's gonna change?
That's what I'm saying. But to have an opportunity to be able to talk to this guy, I mean, I've talked to him on the phone.
But I'm just saying, he's the only application. We're gonna appoint him. I mean, yeah, I'd like to meet him, but it doesn't matter, I mean, we're gonna appoint him.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Unless you wanna run a conversation, Mike.
No, I'm just, that's, I'm putting it up for conversation here, if you guys wanna go forward and do an appointment.
Put in his resume, I don't, I don't have any problem with it, I'm sure he'll, he'll tell us the same things he has with his resume anyway, if we ask him in person, so.
Motion to appoint. What's his first name?
Brian.
Brian Warnema as mayor of Swisher.
I got a motion to appoint Brian as mayor.
Is there an effective date on that?
Um, well, I'll have to contact him and get it opened up. Administered, so then it'd be effective then.
Okay, as soon as he does that, okay.
I second.
I second.
I just think it makes sense with the events coming up in Swisher. I just think it makes sense with the events coming up in Swisher, maybe he could attend those as mayor to get his face out there.
True.
Okay, I got a motion to appoint Brian.
Warnamont.
Warnamont as the new mayor of Swisher, and I got a second. We have a roll.
Sure, Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Enick.
Aye.
Cause we don't need that on the list. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, adjourn, I got a second. Meeting's open. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.